Safe streets, vibrant neighborhoods, successful business and commerce. These are things that make a healthy community. We are a diverse community, rural, suburban, urban. A multitude of languages and ethnicities, ages and experiences. We are a collaborative community. Public-private partnerships make us a model community that others want to follow. It is what makes us unique. It is what makes us strong. The employees of Kent County reflect our diversity and seek to serve our communities.
People in this county, in this area, we wrap our arms around each other. We come together to collaborate, to solve problems. We're all working for the good of the whole. And I think that's wonderful. And you can see it. You can see it as you drive around Kent County.
Our impact starts the day a baby is born and a birth certificate is issued. To protecting children from deadly diseases through vaccination, to the public safety and justice provided by law enforcement and the courts, to offering veterans services and caring for the elderly. Every day, we work to keep our communities robust.
I think if you are somebody who's interested in serving your community, in building a strong knowledge base and a good group of people to work with, then the county is one of your best employment opportunities out there. It's been completely rewarding in every way I could possibly explain for 26 years. And I feel like I grow every single day still today.
Leading these dedicated employees are 19-member Board of Commissioners and our county administrator/controller, along with our elected officials and appointed department directors, placing emphasis on civic involvement, quality housing, vibrant neighborhoods, and strong solid infrastructure to allow businesses to thrive. Professional, dedicated, collaborative, and innovative.
Behind the scenes collaboration between foundations, charitable organizations, nonprofits, for-profit businesses, public sector demonstrated through the county, the city of Grand Rapids, the townships, all the cities and the villages in our area. If we don't come together, then we will not have the strength that we have today. And I only hope to build upon that.
Our aim is to make our communities the best they can be. We are involved in exciting development projects, sustainable recycling programs, and creative progressive prevention programming. We partner with elected officials impacting policy ideas that become great achievements. We seek opportunities to reach out into the community and offer our services to help our residents make Kent County thrive.
Our relationship is solid, both from a staff standpoint at the county level, as well as the Board of Commissioners. And they understand what we do and the benefits that we can do for the community. And vice versa, we couldn't do what we do without the help of Kent County.
While most of us are busy running our lives, Kent County's elected officials, administrator/controller, and over 1,600 employees are serving the communities where we live our lives. So we can all have a place we are proud to call home. Kent County, it's life well-run.
Morning, folks.
Good morning.
The mics have been on, I'm sorry. So whatever you've been quietly saying to each other has been recorded.
I apologize to Darryl.
Okay, welcome to the Finance Physical Resources Committee. It's June 7th, it's 8:30. Item one on the agenda is public comment. Is there any public comment this morning? A lot of people here. We don't usually get this big crowd. I want to welcome the media. You guys don't show up very often, Rick. And it used to be you'd show up only when we had something very, very controversial. But I think you're here for something very important. And so that's good. Consent agenda, I need a motion to approve.
So moved. Support.
That's items A through E.
Correct.
Would anyone like to remove anything from that agenda before we go? If not, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
No opposed? Thank you. Item three, Darryl, please.
This is a request to recommend to the board to submit an application to the Michigan Strategic Fund to create a Michigan Strategic Fund-designated Renaissance Zone on two parcels within Gaines Charter Township, to agree to forego taxes under the General Property Tax Act on the property for duration of the 15-year Renaissance Zone designation, and to enter into a 15-year payment in lieu of taxes agreement with Switch Limited in a form approved by county corporate council and subject to the approval of Gaines Charter Township and the Michigan Strategic Fund Board. Switch Limited is a Nevada-based company interested in locating its eastern U.S. data center in the former Steelcase Pyramid Building in Gaines Township. Switch estimates that it will invest $151.1 million in renovating and equipping the building and create 103 new full-time jobs in the first phase of the project. The company projects this new investment will attract multiple co-located clients, estimated to create at least 100 new jobs, and generate significant new airport traffic, hotel occupancy, and other economic activity in the region and in the state. As a result, staff from the Michigan Economic Development Corporation and the Right Place Incorporated have identified it as a good candidate for Renaissance Zone support. Renaissance Zone designation for the property entitled Switch Limited to an abatement of most state and local taxes, including real and personal property. The state reimburses intermediate and local school districts, community colleges, and public libraries for lost revenue where taxes are abated, but does not reimburse the county or local units of government for lost general fund tax revenue. By law, a community has to be distressed to be eligible to establish a Renaissance Zone. Because Gaines Charter Township is not considered a distressed community, Kent County must serve as the applicant of record for the designation. As part of the process to consider Renaissance Zone designation, the state requires the county and Gaines Township to adopt resolutions agreeing to forego the taxes they receive from the property. In order to reduce the impact of the abatement on the county and Gaines Charter Township, Switch has agreed to pay each entity an amount equal to all real property taxes as determined by an agreed-upon assessment process for the duration of this designation. The Gaines Township Board has scheduled action on the agreement and required resolutions on July 11th. If approved by both the county and Gaines Charter Township, the application will be considered by the Michigan Strategic Fund Board on July 26th.
Need a motion to approve?
So moved.
Support.
Okay, before we get to ask any questions, we've got a representative from Switch, Adam Kramer. I'm gonna divert a little bit. I'd let Rick speak, but he gets a little long with him. But Rick, I'm just gonna introduce Adam.
Just rushing the podium.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman and members of the board. It's exciting to be able to work and partner once again with the county on one of the largest projects that we've been involved with in economic development since in recent time. We're proud to be able to partner with you, and thank you again for your cooperation and collaboration. Project is unique, brings a whole different sort of economic cluster to the county, to West Michigan, employs a whole new variety of people that we're excited to welcome to our community. And that's what we're doing also this morning, is that we're welcoming Adam Kramer, one of our newest corporate citizens, to West Michigan, who will give a brief overview of Switch, the project, and why the investment is taking place here.
Thank you so much. So for the record, I'm Adam Kramer, Executive Vice President of Strategy for Switch, and it's an honor to be here today. The Renaissance Zone application in front of you is really a finalization of the tax policies that the Michigan Legislature and Switch worked on in December of this past year. And what it does is it really makes Kent County, and to a larger extent the state of Michigan, much more competitive in attracting data centers. Data centers are the infrastructure that runs the internet and promotes the economic diversification that communities around the country are looking for, but in particular here, to help attract the high-paying, exciting technology jobs of the future. Switch really fell in love with this community when we first came out here. Just a quick story, the first time we came out here for the site selection was during Art Prize, and had no clue what was going on. And we got here and we said, "Why can't we get a hotel?" And they said, "Well, it's this thing called Art Prize." We said, "Okay." So we went through, we spent three and a half hours, my CEO and myself, walking up and down the streets, and we just said, I mean, it was love at first sight. It was one of those moments, right? You don't get to choose who you fall in love with. And we truly fell in love with this community and decided, "This is where we want to call home." And ever since then, it's just been working in cooperation with state and local entities such as yourself to build this environment that we're so excited will not just attract Switch, but more importantly, hundreds of co-located companies that will bring their data center infrastructure and jobs to this community. And we, again, are so thankful for the opportunity to be here today and to present in front of you. So thank you very much.
Thank you, Adam. You're welcome.
Thank you.
Okay, we've got a motion, we've got support, and questions.
Thank you. My question is for Darryl. Going to the fourth bullet point, I'm familiar with Renaissance Zones, but could you elaborate a bit on the distressed community piece? So I understand that Gaines is not considered a distressed community. What's the connection where Kent County can serve as the applicant?
Okay, I'm gonna lateral that one to Rick Chaplin. The county as a whole is, I mean, when you look at just each of the sub-units, according to certain designations, there may be some that are considered more distressed than others. The county as a whole, as a result of just our overall economic, socioeconomic demographics, make us the applicant instead of Gaines Township as a sole entity. But I can defer to Rick.
Yeah, I'll try to elaborate a little bit more. The original Renaissance Zone legislation, enabling legislation passed in the '90, in fact designated a class of communities in Michigan that were, by virtue of income, job, unemployment stuff, that would qualify as distressed. The law also provided, however, that on, I'll call it, projects of major significance within a county, where a particular smaller local unit of government within a county would not qualify, that the county can act as the applicant. So the legislature frankly, in their, I guess I'll call it, in their idea, they didn't want to preclude major projects by virtue of it perhaps not being located in a distressed community. So it's actually, it was pretty wise move, I think. And this is the first time that we've exercised this sort of thing since, I remember since 1996, when the original law passed. Now, you also may remember, some of you anyway, that the Renaissance Zone program has actually sunsetted. It was another thing that the legislature did a long time ago, but they, the legislation enabling the designation of Renaissance Zones has sunsetted, but for certain projects of certain magnitude and economic impact that the state reserves the ability, the Michigan Strategic Fund, to be able to designate Renaissance Zones. Now, the Renaissance Zone designation by the Michigan Strategic Fund cannot take place, obviously, unless there is a local applicant, being the local community, which cannot, by eligibility standards, is not going to be Gaines, but can be the county.
Okay.
Does that make sense?
It does. Thank you.
Thank you, Chair. One of my favorite words is "unique," and I think this is one that's kind of been considered unique. I think it's the first time that we've had an application of this manner. And to hear Rick talk about how the Renaissance Zones are, sunset might have been the time when I was there at the legislature. But what is really unique is the type of industry that we're fostering and bringing into West Michigan. It's just a unique opportunity for us as a county to be involved in it. And I think the uniqueness is going to just show itself in time to come. I have to say to Mr. Kramer, I've used that point about your visiting here during the art time, that I've used that, that kind of culture in West Michigan, our Art Prize, our zoo, our museums, all of our, what I would call, cultural impacts are what makes this community really great. And we're thankful that you acknowledge that and speak of that, and we're thankful that we can be a part of the application process to see Switch land in Commissioner Greedy's area. So we're thankful for it.
Mr. Harold David?
I was trying to figure out who Mr. Harold David it was. No. It was Mr. Harold David. Yeah, thanks for the opportunity and the application for this. Just so I am clear on the proverbial bottom line on this, the benefit for creating the Renaissance Zone is that, at the end of the day, all the local taxing entities will be made whole, is the way I understand it, is correct?
Through an agreement.
But to say, at the end of the day, so the state will reimburse through the Strategic Fund a few of us, in the sense of school districts, community college, Kent District Library, and then us and Gaines Township will be reimbursed via a direct agreement. And so all the taxes will be abated, but eventually they'll be paid, but not necessarily straight from Switch.
For real property, that is an accurate statement. We are, because of the Renaissance Zone designation, abating personal property. So we are not going to be receiving income from personal property in the investment of personal property that Switch is making. For all the real property and real property improvements, that would be an accurate statement.
And then how does that line up with all the changes that are happening with personal property over the next few years, in the sense that would we have been able to tax that personal property or not? Or would the state have reimbursed us as all that change happens?
I don't think we got into too deep into the analysis on that, simply because without the abatement of personal property, it wouldn't have been economically attractive for Switch to locate here. So that was part of the negotiations back in December with the state.
Yeah, I mean, I definitely remember reading that legislation very clear of the significant personal property investment, and how all that comes together in the use tax, and what have you. The next quick question would then be, when we look at our own economic development policy, and we have our different ledgers for the different communities, in the sense that my own community, the simple city of Grand Rapids, is above the threshold, so we can never participate with other such taxes?
Well, you can if you lower that threshold.
We can. We can. So, sorry, excuse me.
No problem.
We have a...
What's that? Yeah, we'll work with the DDA on that. Does that go against Gaines Township on this?
Well, it would, but Gaines Township is well below that threshold.
But this personal property abatement, we'll figure out what that number is, and that will go on Gaines, eventually, or no?
As part of our policy right now, we are not, I don't believe that this is being looked at as being inconsistent with our current policy. The investment that's being made on the personal property side is certainly substantial. But as I said, because it was really part of the genesis of getting Switch to come here, it was not something that was looked at as really negotiable, and our ability to change that. It's a question of, it's an all-or-nothing proposition. You want to have someone come in and make that investment, you go along with some of that and look at the positives and the offset. There are substantial real estate improvements and real estate investment that's also being made that is going to benefit the county and Gaines Township, not to mention the economic impact from job creation.
Again, I get all that. My concern there is more of, like when we did approve the Gaines and Byron, I don't know if it was a TIF or corridor improvement district, just again, looking at how all those numbers balance against our policy, and just again, fair is fair, is what my question is focused on.
And we've focused in the policy on the real property more than the personal property.
And right now, our policy addresses tax capture districts and other tax abatements. It really has not addressed Renaissance Zones.
Matt, you want, you need to comment on that or not?
I think most of it's been handled. If there's any additional questions that we have to...
Roger, you have a question?
Oh, I just comment, and I think, a question. I think I, 16 years, this is the first time I've been asked to, you know, weigh in on this Renaissance Zone. And I think I understand that we've entered into an agreement, and the county's going to be made whole, except for the personal property tax, but that's kind of going away anyway, slowly but surely, perhaps. I would hope, I think, everybody knows how I feel about the personal property tax, but...
I do think one comment, Commissioner, in that commercial personal property tax, over $80,000, is not exempt. And that's a significant reason why this particular process is moving forward. The personal property exemption is on the industrial, and the type of equipment that's coming in here is commercial. So that's a significant difference.
Okay. But all in all, I think I understand that we're going to be reimbursed and made whole for a lot of this tax. Darryl?
For the real property. This is the first time that the county has been requested to establish a Renaissance Zone with properties. We, local units of government have done it pursuant to state law. The county is not able to opt out of those at the local level. This is the first time that the county is doing this. And it's also the first time, to my knowledge, at least over the last 21 years, that the county is doing a pilot agreement, or a payment in lieu of taxes agreement, which is a voluntary agreement between, in this case, Switch and Kent County, and Switch and Gaines Township.
Thanks. Okay, any other? Matt?
Couple questions. One, I just want to understand, maybe from Adam, just the economic impact aspect. So, yeah, I've got a dozen servers and a data center in, you know, Northern Virginia in my day job, and there have been zero times I've flown to visit those servers. So like, the airport traffic, what's the profile of your customers, and how often are they going to be sending people to physically interact with their infrastructure?
And I appreciate the question very much. I think that it varies on a customer-to-customer basis. Historically for us, what we've seen is, is in our Southern Nevada campus, which is of equal size to what the campus will be here, we have 6,500 people who have badge access to work inside of the data center environment. 33% live, have Nevada driver's licenses, live and work, and their jobs exist, but not for the data center environment. The rest commute on a semi-regular basis. And what we see is, is that of the remaining, let's call it 4,000, 3,500 people, we probably see almost 50% of those people who are coming in on a monthly basis to work in the data center environment. I think that it definitely varies based on the load and what kind of a, what kind of a server applications you'll be running and what the work is. For some of our clients, they have, you know, dozens of full-time team members who are there, live in the community, and others in which they have such an active environment with new deployments, and they're so capital-intensive that they're flying out on a regular basis, servicing their gear, working on the equipment, and in that environment. So you'll see an absolute range of that, from situations such as yourself where there's no visits, to situations where there's dozens of people who are living and working in the community because of that. And then we'd say the middle of that, which is the really healthy range, is people who are flying in, staying at hotels, eating at the restaurants, coming in to work on the servers, whether it's for a day or a few days, and flying back out.
Thank you, that's very helpful.
Thank you.
One additional question, Matt? One additional question, if I may. Just in terms of, just reading through the application, it looks like over the 15 years, there's $16.5 million in taxes saved for Switch. What portion of that is lost to the state? What portion is lost to Kent County for otherwise that would be covered by this personal property tax?
Well, with the personal property, all of it would be, but I'm not sure how much would be the county's share and the township's share. We could do a quick computation of that, unless you have that handy, man.
I don't have the figure handy. I can talk you over to the process, though.
It's got to be an estimate, I assume, based on what the personal property ends up being.
Yeah, the tax implications are really on the real property side. So if you look at the pyramid today as it stands, prior to Switch starting work out there, it was a vacant building that had been vacant for a number of years. So the taxes that are going to be paid by Switch over the course of the next several years to this agreement are going to be correlated with the amount of the improvement that's going to go into the pyramid, and the pyramid that it is, it will be valued now as an occupied, essentially, Class A office building. So the difference in the taxes that will be realized on the real property tax side will be in the increase in the real property taxes. And of course, as a part of this process, all of the personal property taxes are going to be forgone as the opportunity cost of bringing in the economic investment. So when you look at the amount of the taxes saved, it's going to be the amount of whatever taxes that otherwise would have been collected by the forgone personal property taxes, and that's going to be the savings, if you will, to Switch in exchange for the economic opportunities for the community. But the gain is going to be, for local taxing authorities under this agreement, is going to be whatever the rise in the real property portion, that is, the pyramid and associated real property portion of the improvements that they make, will now be recuperated as a result of this agreement. We could speculate on numbers, but it's essentially whatever the value of the real property has improved over the years. And in the, in the estimate calculation, we simply use some of the figures that Switch provided to us in terms of the value of the improvements to show that relative gain over time. So to put a dollar figure on it right now would, you know, require speculation as to value three or four, you know, years out. Really don't have figures for that, but I just thought I could talk to the process a little bit.
Okay, so, but the 1.1 million per year Switch's saving reason for applying for this is all from savings comparable to what they otherwise would pay to Kent County and Gaines Township?
All taxing jurisdictions, not just Kent County and Gaines Township. Intermediate school district, library, community college, school district.
Okay, but all local, not state?
Right.
And we don't, we don't have a comparison to if Switch chooses not to come to the area, what that property is?
Right now, the amount of personal property taxes located at the pyramid are minimal because it's been vacated. And so the comparison, you're really starting from a baseline of near zero, to whatever the amount of personal property that is located in the property. So that would be the distinction.
Okay, okay. Thank you.
All right, Emily?
Yeah, I don't necessarily have a question, I have more of a statement. But I just wanted to thank, you know, you guys for this opportunity, and also I wanted to welcome Don Hilton, he's the Gaines Township supervisor, and Mark Sisson as well. In Gaines Township, the pyramid is an icon that, you know, goes back to our industrial roots in the area. And I'm excited for this opportunity and to welcome Switch and all the possibilities that they will provide to us. There are going to be a tenant that will create a significant number of jobs, as we have discussed, and also they'll tremendously impact the local economy. This is an investment and a great opportunity, not only for Gaines Township, but our county and our state as a whole. And it offers us the opportunity to provide a diverse amount of jobs. You know, we're known for the furniture industry and also, you know, the auto industry over here. I think getting more into technology and data is kind of exciting. It's, you know, definitely the way of the future. We already have companies in our state that provide those jobs, but here in Kent County and Gaines Township, it will be, you know, a significant impact. You know, I am excited about the economic growth that will arise, and this is just one of many steps in the process. And, you know, our decision today kind of hinges on, you know, Switch being a great member to our community. So I'm excited for this opportunity, and, you know, thanks for bringing it forward today.
Okay. Thank you. Any other questions?
Chair Vander Mullen, I don't want Rick to feel bad because I didn't ask him a question, so Rick, just, this is, this is like a perfect civics lesson on taxation and everything that's wrong with it. Here we had the state negotiate a contract, bring Switch here, give them tax breaks, and now Switch is once again jumping through hurdles, now to get another one. Why couldn't all of this just been done in the original package?
Home rule, maybe? Home rule?
Frankly, there were changes in state law that also took place that have helped enable this transaction. So the question of timing, I think we brought forth the application as quickly as we could with the last change in state law, which occurred a couple of weeks ago, enabling a pilot, frankly. So from a timing standpoint, we felt collectively, I guess, that it was in the best interest of the community, the best interest of the county and the township, frankly, to wait until the state of Michigan enacted the ability to enter into a payment in lieu of taxes agreement.
And then just one brief follow-up. I mean, taxation in this country and in this state is just ridiculous, and this should highlight more than anything, everything that's wrong with our taxation policies in this country. We've got fifty states going after businesses. Instead of having a level field for all businesses and bringing businesses from all over the world, we make businesses jump through hoops like this. And this proposal highlights it more than anything. Switch is applying to the Strategic Fund, which is a taxpayer-supported entity, and for that privilege, they've also got to pay them five thousand for the application. I mean, that's just outright ridiculous. I mean, when are we, as a state, going to finally realize, let's just make business taxes as low as possible and as simple as possible, so businesses like Switch could have just said, you know what, enough of this nonsense. And I think this highlights it more than anything. I'm fully supportive of the tax breaks. I'm fully supportive of them coming here, but, you know, our taxation policies aren't just El Salvador.
Okay. Thank you. Any other comments? Only one comment I'd like to make. I hope that you don't turn the red lights off on top of the pyramid. For all you folks that live in the North End, I need to explain that.
I think that's directed at me.
Yeah, I am. It is. But that, that little piece of the dome on the pyramid is, just glows at night, and I think it's kind of cool.
I think it's...
Anytime you fly into Grand Rapids, you're going to see your building.
Confuse it with Alexa in Las Vegas. Sorry.
Okay. No other discussion, no other comments? All in favor, say aye. As opposed? Thank you. Thank you. Thanks, Rick. And Adam? Let's go to item four.
This is a request to recommend to the board to approve the annual community corrections comprehensive plan in application for funding under state statute and to authorize the board chair or designate to execute the grant agreement and approve grant extensions and changes within fifteen percent of the original award. Public Act 511 of nineteen eighty-eight provides funding for community corrections advisory boards to administer and operate programs to provide alternatives to incarceration for offenders. The state requires a resolution approving the planned submission from the Board of Commissioners. Recommendations regarding funding for the Court Services Department, pre-trial programs worked through, and community service programs, case management and risk assessment, and the Sheriff's Department Correctional Facility, OUIL III housing, as well as community-based organizations will be finalized following confirmation of funding level and award of funds from the state and appropriated at that time. The anticipated grant period is October 1, two thousand and sixteen through September 30th, two thousand and seventeen. It is expected that the grant will be renewable.
Need a motion to support?
So moved. Support.
Move to support. Questions? Comments? All in favor, say aye. As opposed? Thank you. Item five.
This is, this is a request to recommend to the board to approve a two-and-a-half-year labor agreement for the period of June 2016 through December 31st, two thousand and eighteen between the county of Kent, the sheriff, and the Kent County Deputy Sheriff's Association. The negotiating committee recommends approval of a two-year, two-and-a-half-year labor contract with the Kent County Deputy Sheriff's Association, which represents two-hundred-and-thirty-one members. Wages will increase two percent annually in two thousand and sixteen, seventeen, and eighteen. A second wage tier will be created for employees hired on or after July 1, two thousand and sixteen. It will take, these employees, it will take nineteen and a half years to reach top pay. Second, excuse me. In two thousand and sixteen, the employee's share of healthcare premiums will increase from seventeen and a half percent to twenty percent. The additional twenty-five dollars per period healthcare contribution for employees whose spouses decline available health coverage by their employers will also be deleted. In two thousand and seventeen, two-hundred-and-fifty-dollar single, five-hundred-dollar family deductibles will be added to the HMO plan. In two thousand and eighteen, the out-of-pocket maximum under the county's healthcare plans will increase by one thousand dollars with a corresponding reduction of a thousand dollars in the prescription out-of-pocket maximum to maintain compliance with the limits set forth under the Patient Protection Affordable Care Act. A new insured long-term disability program will replace the pension plan non-duty disability program for employees hired on or after July 1, two thousand and sixteen. The employee pension plan contribution cap will increase from eight-and-a-half percent to nine-and-a-half percent of pay in two thousand and seventeen. Retirement eligibility for employees hired on or after July, January 1, two thousand and thirteen will be twenty-five years of credited service and age fifty, five years of credited service and age sixty, fifteen years of credited service and age fifty-five. A second tier of vacation and paid time off will be implemented for employees hired on or after July 1, two thousand and sixteen. The total two-and-a-half-year increase to salary and benefit cost is approximately one point one million dollars. The requirement for employees to pay union dues will be deleted as required by state law, and this item was recommended for approval by the Legislative and Human Resources Committee at its May 24th meeting.
Thank you, Daryl. I need a motion to approve.
So moved.
Support.
The move is supported. Questions? Stan, Harold?
Thank you, Chair Vander Mullen. Not so much a question, but just a comment. Wanted to thank Daryl and his staff for hammering this out. I know all my years on a school board doing contract negotiation with educational units can be testy at times, you know, hopefully both sides are looking out for the best of each side, and somehow we've got to come into the middle and find an agreement that's possible. It's not always fun, it's not always easy, so I appreciate the time and effort of the staff and this issue.
Harold?
Thank you, Chair Vander Mullen. Mine is on the changes in the pension program. Has this been across the board in all, as part of the new plan of pensions for all employees of the county?
The increase in the cap is very much consistent with that. I can have Amy address the changes related to the age.
Good morning, Amy.
Good morning. Yeah, the other change, which has to do with the retirement eligibility age, was amended for this group to create parity with our road patrol deputies. So the two law enforcement groups, Corrections and Road Patrol, now have consistency in terms of retirement eligibility.
So the move from eight point five to nine point five?
That change applies to everyone.
That is across the board.
Universally, all groups across the board, yeah.
Did we have an estimated cost on that?
Well, this is a cost to the employee, one percent equates to county-wide, probably equates to a million dollars annually.
Okay. Thank you.
Roger? That was my question. Okay. Anyone else?
Thanks for asking it.
Yes, sir. You owe me.
Yeah, you know, definitely following up just slightly on Commissioner Ponstein's comment that, you know, this was negotiated between the union and agreed by them and administration and sheriff. So thank you for that hard work. Though my concerns continue to lie with the two-tier system, so just so I'm clear, where it says that the starting pay and the top pay are the same, that somebody hired today will get there in five and a half years, and somebody hired on July 1 will take nineteen and a half years to hit the maximum pay within that range. And so that is correct?
Yes.
And so they'll be working side by side, a month seniority difference and significant? And how will we measure the impact on staff morale relative to the two-tier system, especially since some of the pioneers in that, being the United Auto Workers and Chrysler and others, are actually moving away from a two-tier system because of the negative impact on morale? So I don't know how we will measure that.
I think that's a good question, and I think morale is a complicated mix of a lot of different things. This is one of those things. I think I would largely rely on input from the Sheriff Department, which is a partner in this negotiation in terms of the impact to this. We feel, I'll speak only on behalf of the county, but we feel that it was a fair compromise. The new hires are still going to be coming in, as far as I know, is the highest-paid correction deputies in the state. So I think that the deal that we're offering to the new hires is more than fair. And sometimes, these types of issues just require that you make tough decisions, and I don't think there was any easy or no pain solution that was available. So we chose what we thought was the solution that involved the least amount of pain.
All right. Thank you.
Any other questions?
If I say, go back to that pension, don't we have an agreement that we equal what the employee pays in, the employer pays in? No?
No. Our intent has been, and the goal that this board set out several years ago, was that we try to reach that fifty-fifty equity. And we're at, at or near that right now, where the employee and the, and the county are, have the similar skin in the game, if you will, where we're at.
Been a few years since I was on the pension board, but I thought we did have, but that's our goal, but, thank you.
Okay. Any other questions? Not all in favor, say aye. As opposed? Thank you. Item six, Daryl, please.
This is a request to recommend to the board to accept and appropriate five-hundred-and-twenty-nine-thousand-seven-hundred-and-forty-six dollars to the Meadows of Millennium Park project and the CIP fund. The Meadows of Millennium Park is currently in development and when completed will significantly expand recreational opportunities at Millennium Park with new trails, a boardwalk overlook, a large pavilion, an outdoor amphitheater, and additional parking and restrooms. Funding for the project has been provided primarily by the Peter F. Sekia family and of three point five million and two-hundred thousand dollars in county funding from the county's CIP fund budget. Additional funding has been made available for certain elements of the project, including the amphitheater, trail work, pavilion area, and a boardwalk with overlook. Gifts and in-kind donations that were secured by Peter Sekia for the project, as well as additional contributions received or pledged to the County Parks Foundation for Millennium Park and the Meadows Project need to be accepted and appropriated to the Meadows Project for accounting and asset tracking purposes.
So moved. Support.
The move is supported. Question? All in favor, say aye. As opposed? Thank you. Item seven is miscellaneous. Is there any miscellaneous support?
Stan? I have to acknowledge it. I want to wish my mother her happy birthday. She's been living on this earth for eighty-seven years. She made it, so hopefully, one more year. Keep going, so.
Happy birthday.
Okay. Thank you. Roger?
Yeah, I'd just like to make a comment about Stan's statements during the Switch. I think we've been battling these TIFs and Renaissance zones for every year I've been on this board, and we've always felt that somehow they're picking winners and losers with some of these programs. And in a perfect world, I'd like to see just a flat tax for everybody, so lift all the bows. But I don't think we're living in a perfect world, so I'd just like to make the statement that as a policy, we've always tried to, you know, address those Brownsfields and all these tax options that just are so confusing.
You know, I, it's a matter of fairness and balance and all that stuff, and you're right, you know, it's been well over twenty years, and, you know, we keep struggling with how to, how to do some things that are balanced, be fair and equitable and all those kind of things. It doesn't always work out perfect, but we're trying, and that's the important part. Any other comments? Harold?
I'd like to comment to Stan's mention of his mom, because Stan's mom and dad were teachers for Joanne and I in our Jason Graham building. Yeah. So, they were great influences in our life, and wish mom a happy birthday.
Vander Mullen?
Thank you. I just wanted to mention that the Management Performance Play Plan will be meeting, meeting in three eleven, twelve, three twelve immediately following this, this meeting.
Anyone? Stan?
Just a dovetail on Roger, and even, you know, that whole discussion about that, the cost to government to sort all this stuff out and figure it out, and the staff to, you name it, it would be cheaper just to redo the tax system.
Okay.
Welcome to the parties, man.
I don't think we'll live that long. Okay. No other comments or questions, Roger?